Because it is 7:02 now. And the first part of our agenda is a public information session with the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, School Committee, and the members of the LEPC. And as always, Chief Fisher, I'm going to hand it to you as the emergency manager.
Thanks very much, Kate. I think that if I had to summarize the focus this week, it's really on our community caretaking function with the LEPC. I think that we talked Tuesday that we felt we were at a good spot. And that's a little hard to say because, you know, been personal contact with some people in Carlisle that are sick, that are hurting, and that's hard. But that I think our infrastructure is strong. We've been there to support the new programs, which I'm sure you're going to call them the individual folks. I assume, Kate, you still want to call them the individual department heads to provide a report. So I'm going to hold up. If I said the one overarching thing is watching out for your fellow, for our fellow man in Carlisle, for our residents. And as a point of emphasis, you probably caught last week that we were, and being here this week, we're really focused on open spaces and good spacing. So a real good example of that was yesterday. I was out a lot yesterday. I'm sure many of you were, and I was out even till pretty late in the evening. I thought we had a ton of people out, but people were doing an excellent job at the parks. Of course, one of the focuses that was brought up at the LEPC meeting was ensuring that we're following all the rules and that Carlisle residents are aware that the social distancing applies to transfer station, transfer station employees are focused on their own social distancing while still trying to help Carlisle residents. So they've got the basic level of personal protective devices there. So if I had to say one focus, Kate, for tonight might be, as you know from our LEPC meeting, that we're really focused on our community caretaking function. And if I could just highlight the great work that the Public Works folks are doing at the transfer station and keeping the things that are important to Carlisle residents running. So thank you for this time. I look forward to anybody's questions. I've got my email running on a separate screen. If somebody wants to email, if they're unable to weigh in because they're calling from a cell phone with a chat function, I'll keep checking my email. But thank you for this time, Kate.
Thank you, Chief. And from Chief Fisher to Chief Soros.
Okay, so I guess I'll just say, we're still here and we still will respond to calls when we're called out. It's been eerily quiet. I think people have been hesitant to call and people are not going to the hospital unless they have to, and not as many people are having surgeries. A lot of times we have calls after people come home from the hospital. So a lot of that's not been happening. It's been very quiet, but we're here, we're ready. We have a second ambulance more outfitted than it had been before. It's kind of up to the Carlisle standards, so we are ready for calls. Again, we're not expecting a huge rush on calls. I think our issue will be more that when we do get called, whether the hospitals are full and we might have to be redirected. But we're here, we're ready. I do want to thank people for social distancing. As somebody who's been seeing people who, I believe, have this virus, it is not just the flu. It's not something you want to get, so keep it up. I think we've done a good job. We have some people in town, but it's, you know, we're not being hit like some other areas, and that's a good thing. This is not something you want to have, especially not in the next couple of weeks. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Hi, Linda Fantasia. Would you like to say a word or two? Linda, you're muted. Okay, now you're not.
Better, yep.
Okay. Yeah, you're on now.
So we are tracking the numbers based on the state surveillance side, which we do know suffers from underreporting because sometimes a diagnosis is made by a private clinician, and the state only counts lab-tested positive cases. Our numbers are still five positive COVID cases, and four of those have cleared or they've recovered, and six residents who were in quarantine, and four of those have now cleared their quarantine criteria. The other things that, in case people are curious, I have talked with Kimball's ice cream stand, and they are not going to move the stand until the governor lifts the social distancing order. Board of Health is working with the Carlisle Neighbors Response Team that I'm sure Laurie will report on. We're also working on the website because we find it could be a little more user-friendly. So we are trying our best to provide the information that we think is really going to be helpful to residents. The guidance for COVID keeps changing, and the latest change has to do with when you're considered contagious. And it's now two days prior to your first symptom. So you are contagious without any symptoms for, at least now they are certain, two days prior, and that may change again. Let's see. And the few times that I've traveled into town, it's kind of nice. Every place I've gone, post office and town hall, actually, that's all, everyone is in masks and gloves. And when they get in their cars, I see them wiping their hands with hand sanitizers. So people are really taking this serious, and I think that's going to make a difference for us. I don't know, there are other Board of Health members on the call.
Yeah, I think I saw Todd. Todd, you still there?
I'm here.
Would you like to add anything to that?
No, I've been dealing with somebody at my work. They have the Littleton's facility there, so it's interesting seeing somebody from, you know, they have that Littleston Assist Care Facility. And then the person who's my coworker's wife is now infected with the coronavirus. So it's interesting to see the protocols of caring for somebody else at home, and you know how people are actually, you know, sequestering themselves in parts of the houses and delivering meals. It was interesting from the primary care physician on guidance on when people could actually return to work. And the consensus was, interestingly, if your partner has a fever, and as soon as the fever breaks, you have 96 hours, and you have no symptoms after 96 hours, you can return to work. I guess in personal protective gear. So that was, you know, curious for me. I think from my work's perspective, they're asking for another week of sequestering for this one employee, even though, you know, they don't have any symptoms yet, but that was what the PCP was advocating.
Thank you. I see Tony and Gal again. Would either of you like to add something from Board of Health?
I have nothing to add. This is Kathy.
Hi, Kathy, sorry.
Hi there, everyone. Linda is doing a great job, so thanks very much to Linda and all the board members and all the Board of Health staff.
Yes, I agree.
I'll just add that we discussed at our last meeting, the Board of Health meeting, that apparently there are a lot of potential for asymptomatic people carrying the illness. And so we did discuss a lot what the numbers really mean, you know, in town, and we're thinking that they don't really reflect the potential for becoming in contact with the disease itself. So that's something that I think, hopefully, the public can keep in mind, that the situation is a little more dire than the numbers of actual cases would communicate.
Yeah, I actually looked at a couple of other sites, and I also keep up with the CDC and everything. What I would say, it would be really nice if you had a really strong statement there that just said, "Consider that everybody has it. Just act that way." Because I think you just, because you can't tell, because two days before they get symptoms, they're spreading it. And consider that you might have it, and act also accordingly. They just have to be super careful for the greater good. Laurie, I think, could you tell us something about the neighbor? Tim, can you, Laurie Cameron Eckler? Can you unmute her? There we go. Okay, Laurie, take it away.
Update, we had our first two customers. Some of you already know that, yesterday.
Right, we had one.
And I went, we had two, and I shopped for them yesterday afternoon. I went in person because neither had been shopping in close to two weeks for groceries. So we tested the process, more or less. It worked really well. We gave them a grocery list. They gave me back a grocery list. We used a credit card for each of them. We, you know, we cleaned their credit cards on both ends of the process. We gave them a list of recommended practices for unpacking their groceries and putting them into their house. They were grateful. They both sent notes last night of gratitude. It was good. The one thing I will say is I ended up going to New Hampshire to shop for these people, and I was glad I shopped and they didn't shop. I wore a mask and gloves. The grocery store workers had no masks or gloves on at the grocery store, which I found a little alarming. And then we have a few other families we're helping, and I also found a volunteer last night to help with the trash pickup. So we have a volunteer who will do trash pickup for seniors if they need that, so we're going to push that out. And the mosquito is going to publish some of this tomorrow in the online version of the mosquito to update people who don't already know what we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me see. Angela?
Hi, from the COA. We're still doing at least weekly, if not more, updates in our email news you can use. So if anybody wants to get that, they can just call the COA line, or you can find it on the town website under the COA communication. We are reaching out and calling seniors. We did apply for a grant to get some special food support for some of our lowest-income seniors, and we did get that grant today. So that money should be coming in. And then we'll put how we're going to use it in place. We have two of our programs that are online, our Senior Moments, which is a coffee, and our Reiki. We're doing two of our exercise classes online. And today I got my first call for financial help for somebody who's self-employed, and all of their bills are coming due and they have nothing coming in. So I've reached out to the churches, and we'll see what they can do.
Thank you. And I want to put in a plug for your news that you can use because of all the things that come into my mailbox, it's one of the most useful things that I get in terms of information. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Kate.
All right. Any questions from anybody in the audience for LEPC? We've heard from everybody but, I guess, us, but Alan, you want to put in any comments on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, you know?
No, we don't do anything.
I know. I wanted you to say it.
Compared to all these other people, we're real pakers.
Yeah, surely. I mean, this is what we do. We hope to keep everybody informed, in fact, of all you guys do do, and it's amazing. And thank you. Want to thank you very much for all the service. There was some pressure for, you know, more information. Here we are. I think we're just, I think there's maybe, I don't know how many people. We have 25 people in the audience, but many of us are, you know, here for the meeting and not for the information. But thank you for being open and for coming Tuesdays and Thursdays to give all this information out.
Hey, schools.
Oh, I'm sorry, schools.
Well, the good news is I don't have anything new to report.
You have the firefighter stuff behind you, so I didn't make the connection.
All right, sorry, I can change that.
Put a book there next time.
Come on.
All right, all right. No, we are good. How's this? We're good.
Oh, my God, with a flick of, you know. Very good. You are good. Thank you.
I will say this, though, Kate. Barney and I had worked on the Phone Pals, and it's sort of morphing, which is great. We had a young fifth grader call a senior today, and the senior called me afterwards to say that she sang to him, and then they sang some songs together. And he said it was just wonderful. And so we've got another one for Monday, set up for Monday. We'll see how that goes, too. So the little gifts that are coming out of this are pretty cool.
Very good. Excellent. Okay, well, thank you all. I think we can probably go ahead with the rest of the agenda, which I will now read. And I want to thank the LEPC and all the members that reported again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so on our agenda, we have a discussion of fiscal impacts of the COVID-19 with the FinCom. And depending upon what we hear from them as well, we're going to have, start a discussion about rescheduling the annual town meeting and town election dates. I don't think we'll make a decision tonight, but we'll certainly discuss that. And we'll have the town administrators' report and liaison reports, and then adjournment. Okay, so, welcome, FinCom. I don't know, I know that Nathan isn't attending, but I don't see Luke, which I regret, but...
Yeah, no, I'm on. Actually, I was in the car, so I'm logging in now, so you'll see my ugly mug in about two minutes.
Oh, okay, thanks, Luke. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize your face on the, you know, it looks like a green, a white phone on a green thing, so.
No, it's probably better.
Okay, well, I'm happy that you're here. Great. So Victor, Tim, can you unmute the, if you're the ones that muted, the FinCom now? So there's Jim, and Scott, and Victor, and Melissa, and Lynn is here.
Hi.
And...
James Cattaccio, I think.
And James is here, and do I see Aaron?
No, Aaron's not going to be able to make it.
Okay, I didn't think I saw him, but there's some names at the bottom. Sometimes the names don't match the people exactly.
We should have everybody but Aaron. I see him on the screens.
Great. Excellent. So Victor, you guys met last Monday. You had a discussion. You want to let the Selectmen know what you've been thinking about.
Yes, absolutely. So let me give you a summary of our meeting, and then any folks from FinCom, feel free to chime in any additional color commentary or anything that I've missed.
Yes.
So in summary, we kind of opened up and discussed the fact that this COVID-19 situation, when it comes to finances and how we're going to do the planning, it's really around the theme of managing uncertainty by essentially shoring up our reserves. The reality is that we don't know how big the impact is going to be. Jim Dar had a good idea in terms of looking back to see what the prior impact of a financial impact to some type of downturn was for the town. But that said, you know, that's past history, and this one may play out a little bit differently. So really, that was a theme of our conversation on Monday, which is, how do we manage this uncertainty? It's really around shoring up reserves and looking at different ways and talking about different ways that we might be able to do that. So first, we actually addressed the physical year of this year, because based upon our spending, there is the opportunity to be able to shore up some reserves from that standpoint. So one of the thoughts that we had discussed was really requesting all departments and committees really to hold on discretionary, any discretionary spend. And we talked a little bit about, and I won't go into all the details, around what is defined by discretionary spend. The other thing that kind of came up for FY '20 is really freezing any vacant positions. And certainly, that's something that happens in the corporate world. I'm kind of going through that right now, where we're at, where there's uncertainty about revenues. Then, those are the two major items under FY '20. And FY '21 was really about looking at the budget, and it was a proposal, at least as a first cut, to look at reducing expenditures of FY '21 by about $1 million. This could come from a combination of places, going back to the high school, CPS, looking at OPEB in terms of our contributions, as well as facilities, that they had a obviously significant financial amount in the warrant, as well as going back to the departments and asking them to go back and resubmit their budgets with a 5% reduction and taking a look at what that is. And I think the way that approach that would be is almost like what we did in October, where we asked them to submit a budget based upon their thoughts and recommendations, sitting down and reviewing with us. We'd ask for them to, you know, go back through and provide a budget, what it would look like if you reduced by 5%. Where would that come from? And then we'd sit down with each of the groups in the coming weeks to review that and get a lens on that. Rounding that, rounding out the 2021 was really a comment on opportunity potentially around eliminating the COLA. There's a 2% COLA there, as well as looking at, obviously, the long-term tax article in the warrant. And these are the things that we kind of highlighted that, you know, based upon our discussion here this evening with the Board of Selectmen, that we would discuss in more detail and flesh out in the coming weeks at the FinCom meetings. I think the other note here really is around the high school and CPS or Carlisle Public Schools is, you know, we can come up with a number and say, well, it should be 200, 300, whatever number it is. However, we didn't feel at the, right now, that we really kind of understand what they're facing in terms of, obviously, having to put things online and whatnot. So I think there was an action item for Scott and Melissa to kind of reach out to the schools, engage with them, initial conversation, and then maybe set up some time for them to kind of share a bit about some of the things that they've been dealing with with the COVID-19 crisis. And then we could all talk about this aspect of being a part of this reduction to actually shore up our budget for next year in terms of mitigating risk against this COVID impact. So I think that kind of gives you an overall broad summary of what we talked about, some action items that we had. And I'll just pause here and allow any of the FinCom members to add any color commentary or any additional things that I may have missed in the summary.
Great, thank you.
One thing I would, as part of the process, when we talk about town meeting, and I'm not fully up to speed on what's being allowed and whatnot, but we should also think strategically how we can do, how we can utilize a fall town meeting if there are certain warrants that have a financial component that aren't as time-sensitive. How do we, how can we leverage the timeline and additional town meetings to deal with this uncertainty? So that's something else to start thinking about and keeping up to speed with what's going on at the state level.
And if I could add something on what Victor mentioned about the revenue, historic revenue for property tax? And that is that the pattern is interesting, that if we all remember, that the last recession really began in 2007, though it didn't hit visibly outside of financial markets till '08, was deep in '09, and was already technically no longer a recession in 2010. In all of those years, our property tax did not go down at all. And in fact, our property tax didn't have any problems until 2012. We're talking about fiscal years now. And the one year when there was a problem was 2012 to '13. So the point I would draw from that is, A, as I think we know, property tax is very resilient. B, there's a lag on it. And I think the lag has a lot to do with valuations and sales and other things that occur, not, you know, this summer or next winter, but in future years. The other thing is, I would say, is that our biggest risk element in revenue is state aid. The state is going to take, and there's no question, a massive hit, partly in this fiscal year and a lot in next fiscal year. So the portion of our revenue that's most at risk is that state line item, which you might say, oddly, since we're always complaining we're dependent on property tax, you know, is a relatively small portion of our total revenue.
But what is it, I mean, in general, what is state aid? Because it's state aid in schools, too, right?
Yeah. Yep. No, it's on both sides. I don't know if Tim is on there somewhere, I think.
Do we know?
It's about $1,003,000, state aid, something like that, if I recall. I don't have an estimate, but, and most of that is Chapter 70 school aid.
But then there's also aid that goes to the high school, too, right?
Transportation aid is the, I think Kim...
Yeah, Kim is muted, Tim, so...
Okay, let me get her on. There you are.
It's about $1,004,000 that we got this year, and majority of that $1 million was Chapter 70. And then the difference was the unrestricted transportation for the $400,000. So really, as I had done, you know, Jim, we went back and I went through from 2006, the property revenue, all the revenues, and they're strong. The revenues weren't really, you know, a problem. And looking at it for the next few months is it's really just real estate and that last payment for the state aid, which is probably about, you know, divide up the 1.4 million by 12 months, and it's just a smaller amount left on that. So it's mainly real estate and that's, and motor vehicles, a little bit, that's left to come in for revenues.
From a state perspective, I'll also add, there was a news, there was an article that was kind of published, a newsletter, where I think that the state, in thinking about this fiscal year, didn't feel that there was going to be a major issue, although there still needs to be discussion, given the fact that they have a fairly good, robust stabilization fund. However, FY '21, I think the impacts they were assessing in terms of their revenues was quite substantial. So I think if anybody's interested in having, I circulate it to FinCom. If others in the Board of Selectmen haven't received that, I can circulate that, and I can point out which article in the newsletter I'm referring to.
That would be helpful. Thanks. Okay, anybody from Board of Selectmen have questions, comments, concerns for FinCom?
Do you have any, you had a set of discussions, I'm shooting, my voice has gone, over the next few weeks? Any idea what, a little more detail on what that timeline would look like?
Well, I think one of the things that I wanted to flesh out here is in terms of, one thing is, Monday we'll meet again, and we'll debrief this conversation, any topics that have come up. But I think in that, I think we'll probably start with taking a look at some of the items within the warrant, and then we'll probably start looking to do a communication to the departments in terms of if the board is, in terms of feedback from the board around these, some of these ideas, getting a memo perhaps back to the departments to ask them to do a look at the budgets, and certainly giving them a bit of time to work the 5% kind of reduction in terms of where they're at. So we put the guide in there. So for example, some of the things we talked about was that, you know, anything in long-term caps that they had submitted, we would include in the 5% for that particular department or committee. So we put, obviously, the guides in there. So we want to give them probably a couple of weeks to come back with that, and then we start scheduling that. So I'd probably say, if you're kind of working through the, you know, timing, you're probably looking at it like early May, you know, kind of flushing all of this out.
Okay, so if we had a town meeting in June, even if late in June, you'd probably be ready for that.
Yeah, yeah, late in June would be, we'd be okay with that.
Okay.
I do want to...
No, Kim, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, and Jim, you probably saw on the bottom, is for 2020... I just wanted to say, and Jim, you probably saw on the bottom, is for 2020, I just did the fourth quarter billing for around 7.1 million. And our collections, we're right on the money with the collections. It was, we were like 22% left to collect, so we're right on with that 7 million. So the collections right through the third quarter were spot on, so that's, that's good.
If I could go back to Victor's early point about 2020, if the selectmen want to request that all departments and the schools forego discretionary expenditures, clearly you would need to do that really soon for it to make any difference. One place where I think we didn't, really, I don't think Victor discussed in detail, we know of course that the head of the COA position is open, and in fact, there is a candidate for that job.
That's right.
And we really talked in particular about that opening, and I personally don't consider it discretionary, but, you know, others might have a different opinion.
Right.
Tim, do you want to say something about spending among departments and what, you know, where the department heads are with that?
Sure, we had a department heads meeting earlier in the week, and I asked departments, coincidentally enough, to freeze all non-essential spending for the remainder of the fiscal year. And we all know this is the, the time of year when departments tend to look at what's left in the budget and decide whether or not they need a new office chair or, you know, certain things that aren't quite essential, but there's money available. We've asked them to forego that, and there was, you know, there was pretty widespread support for that under the circumstances. So the message has been delivered, in maybe a slightly different fashion, but it's been delivered that non-essential spending is off the table for the remainder of fiscal 20.
And I guess the other question is, do we have any more potential open positions? Because I know at a certain point, Planning Board was anticipating something.
Well, correct, they were anticipating a retirement at the end of this fiscal year. To my knowledge, they haven't prepared a job notice to fill that, so that is a position that potentially would be, would be open. I think with the COA director, you could argue that that's kind of further down the track, they've got a candidate and they like to move forward, so that one is maybe in a different place than the Planning Board administrator position.
And I see the chief raised his finger, so...
Oh, he's muted.
We don't want to hear from him, he's muted.
All set, John.
All right, thanks. Now, the, we had a retirement, disability retirement, and the applications close on the 20th, and we're hoping to have somebody in place, as the selectmen know, in May. So I'll need some direction on that. The only problem is if we don't fill that, the overtime to fill the spot is, I don't know you're going to recognize, we would recognize any savings. But I did want to point that out, if we're talking about open positions, if you, if you need me to keep that open, I would need direction on that, please. Thank you.
Okay. I think the important thing is to not have anything coming out of left field, so everybody knows what's coming down the pipe, both FinCom knowing if there's going to be something open and you knowing whether you're going to be able to fill it. So that's, I just think that's the important part, that we keep all that communication open so that people can, aren't our tentacles all the time. So we know, as you said, you will get the directions ASAP. Luke, do you have any questions, comments?
Well, I was just going to bring up, what about like facilities and long-term caps from, from this year? You know, money that's not spent, is there any way we can, I know usually it gets bonded separately for the long-term cap stuff, but is there any way we can benefit if we don't spend those down? You know, because like facilities, for example, you know, we've kind of had this discussion. You know, they always seem to carry money over, you know, because projects don't happen or projects get extended. You know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do, you know, maintenance and, you know, a lot of the deferred maintenance that, you know, hasn't been done, needs to be done. But, you know, I just, I don't know what's in the budget there, you know, because that might be a big chop, you know, maybe we put off a cooling tower or a roof or, or something, you know, just, you know, because like coal, I don't think we should mess with coal, I think that, you know, you know, it's 2% and, you know, I think we need to stick with that. But are there, are there any other things that aren't specifically, you know, town budget items that, that maybe we could pick a little bit from as well? You know, so the cuts aren't so deep elsewhere?
FinCom?
If I could comment on that, you know, the, I think you're right though, Luke, that if, if the current projects, whose funds could be spent next year, can delay or forego certain things, that just gives the town a little elbow room, we may or may not need, doesn't mean they can't do it next fiscal year, but it means the money is still available. You know, we all realize we're in an emergency, we're not just, you know, so I think if they can hold off, that would be helpful. But it doesn't actually help our fiscal 20 bottom line per se, it doesn't increase our cash reserves or our free cash, but it still would be helpful, just like I think we need to reinforce here that, to the extent that both school entities can look at, you know, deferring expenditures planned for this year that aren't essential, it's a little different from, you know, from Tim's group, that would be very helpful, that would help in terms of improving our cash position going into next year.
If there is a large bill, I mean, it may be something where we might want to push a bill and, you know, on something like that, where the money carries from year to year, push it from, you know, being expended out in June and expending it out into, you know, July, also depending on, you know, how our cash flow is going. And that's what I'm working on now is analysis of the last three years of expenses in the last three months and what we have for revenues, just to, just to give you a better idea on that.
And I did, coming out of our last meeting, I did send the school administration and school committee an email essentially summarizing what we talked about relating to fiscal 20 and starting to get a read on what potential savings and what potential additional expenses there may be this year, as well as setting the expectation that we'll be revisiting the guideline budget. I didn't provide any specific targets, but basically got that conversation going and will plan on keeping a pretty robust channel of communication open with them. They're, they're dealing with, you know, different timelines and different challenges. I imagine by May, they'll have a much better sense of if schools are going to return this year, which that answer will probably change the equation in terms of what can be saved this year versus, versus not.
Yeah, I think also, we've got to face the fact that we haven't seen no data yet that this is ending. This could go on much longer than what most people are assuming it will. And we just have to be careful that we be conservative in our outlook. I mean, hopefully, it will go just the way we're predicting, and that by the end of June or sometime in June, this will be largely behind us, but it's quite possible that doesn't happen.
Well, that's right, and we have, we have two crises going on at the same time. One is medical and one is economic. And I think we all know the economic crisis is likely to last much longer than the medical. And the medical, for all of the, you know, heartbreaking elements in it, you know, in some ways, we have a better feel for. The economic, we really have no idea how that's going to play out, and I think that was the feeling of our committee the other night, that let's just give the town, you know, some room to deal with the unknown in fiscal 21. As much room as we can reasonably do without hurting, you know, without hurting real services.
Right.
My question is to the FinCom, in thinking about asking departments to resubmit their budgets, how did you come up with a 5% figure as a, as the reduction you wanted them to submit?
I think that's kind of a hypothetical, Barney, I don't know that we have an agreement on a 5%. If you look at the total budget of the town and you reduced it 5%, that would be roughly a million and a half. You know, I think, my view is we should start with, what, how much room do you want to create? How do we get there? And, you know, some of that is off of OPEB, some is off capital, you know, then we may be able to back into it and then turn to the departments and say, well, it's actually 2.5% or 4% or whatever. But I don't think that was really a mathematical deduction.
It was rough math, the way Jim had described it. I think the other thing I would add to this is that when we're asking for the 5%, what it would look like, it is not the case that we're, we're going to say that it's going to be a 5% reduction. It's really an exercise, right? It's really an exercise to see what comes up, and I think the conversation would be, you know, what drops off? And to be honest, the way I kind of see it is that maybe it's not a 5% reduction that you take across the board, maybe it's, you know, we need to look across and have a discussion with Board of Selectmen and say, hey, here are the things that we would lose, maybe some it's, maybe it's some it's five, maybe it's some, some it's two, and then we complement that with some adjustments in terms of facilities and OPEB to come up with the, you know, the cushion of a million to a million and a half. But it was more from an exercise perspective, you know, back to the envelope, 5% seems to be putting it in a good place to have the conversation on our side.
Yeah. And so a little bit to follow up on Luke's question about the timeline, so how would you see this happening over the next, you know, four weeks? Are you thinking that, that you would be asking for this exercise to happen sometime, you know, by the middle of May? Or just going back to the comment about potentially if there was an end of June town meeting, we'd have to move fairly quickly?
Yeah, so I think the way that I would actually see it is that, you know, I think I did gave it about a month timeline to allow the town committees and departments to do a little bit of work, and then we'd sit down with them at, you know, the sequential meetings to actually hear through, hear through and have the discussion.
Tim, will you remind us, at a certain point, I thought there might be a chance of rescheduling the town meeting beyond June 30th? I don't know that that's what we want to do and whether that's a good idea or not. If we go beyond June 30th, it seems to me we amortize our monthly budget.
Right, the state would allow what's called a 1/12 budget whereby your, your budget would be 1/12 of your fiscal 20 budget going forward month by month until the town does pass a balanced budget for fiscal 21. It's fraught with a number of difficulties, not the least of which there are a number of expenses that are due right at the beginning of the fiscal year, like the payment to those six retirement and school districts and the budget, you know, the payments are kind of front-loaded in a lot of ways. So a 1/12 budget, I don't know if that would be workable for very long. So the hope is that towns are able to have their town meeting and set their budgets in place for July 1.
Okay, so I, the reason I'm bringing that up is, you know, is to kind of give us a target. And this, this is helpful, because that was the other uncertainty is about, you know, when are we going to have town meeting? And if we decide that we don't want to go beyond June 30th, we're not going to go beyond June 30th, it will be, you know, that also helps the FinCom know how to accelerate, you know, or do their job. If it was going to, you know, otherwise, we could say, well, it'll take as much time as you need and we'll have our, you know, our town meeting after that. So that's, that's why I would like to kind of get that nailed down. We probably will do that on next Tuesday. Hopefully, we can do, give you a final timeline.
That was my point earlier, was that, you know, as we're thinking about a town meeting in June, you know, maybe it literally is just operating budget, what we need to get passed, and then we can push off some of these...
That's right.
Others until the fall or September or whenever we'll have, be farther down the road.
To me, that makes all kinds of sense. Instead of making rushed decisions, cutting things that, you know, maybe we should or shouldn't be cutting, you know, just for the sake of cutting them, because we, you know, we have our loppers out there and we're kind of, you know, cutting in the weeds there. It just makes more sense to me, so I agree with that kind of strategy.
Just a point of clarification on the 1/12, and maybe it's Tim or Kim, I think the language says no less than 1/12. Less than 1/12 could be 2/12.
In other words, if you have a big payment front-loaded, you can make that payment.
That's the way it seems, but I don't know, what do you think, Kim?
I don't, I think they're, I think you're going to have a lot of finance directors, town accountants, we all know what's coming due, so as this gets closer, I think we're all going to ensure that those big payments can be made. So I think there's still probably, I think they're dealing with each thing as they're dealing, you know, with it, and hopefully, we can all get our town meetings by June. But if it isn't, I think there might be, don't you, Tim, think there might be some modifications with certain things for that first? Yeah. I think even within the first few months, because there are very front-loaded, you know, payments that are due, and it would be detrimental to all the towns if we couldn't make those. So I think there will be, I think it's just the push of just trying to throw something out there so that you're not going ahead and spending, you're starting out spending much more than what your prior year budget, you know, was, if this should go on for two, three, four months. You know, and it may be being selective a little bit with, you know, which, you know, which ones you pay, you know, push off to August or not, but I do think there's going to be more language and more direction on that as we get closer, so that towns can make those payments.
Back to the town meeting, is there anything that can be done or any options we have around the quorum? So if we're going to push the most important things to the June meeting, and sometimes we have trouble even filling a quorum as is, if people are apprehensive of going out into crowds, I really think from an efficiency standpoint, if we had a town meeting, we didn't hit a quorum, we pushed it again to another night to try to hopefully hit a quorum, it doesn't seem like the best plan. Are there any options we have around that?
I've been to football field.
Yeah, there's something in the legislation that would allow a community to have a reduced quorum, but I would defer to the moderator who should be joining us momentarily. I know he's thought about those issues, among other things, but there is an ability, and it's, it's not without controversy for reducing the quorum if it would mean having a meeting versus not having a meeting. But I defer to Wayne on that. And actually, Kate, I can text him if you'd like, he was going to join us, I think around eight, but...
Yeah, well, we had him on eight, at eight on the thing, but why don't you go ahead? Because I think the FinCom needs to have this information as much as we do, because I really think it's important for your planning and, or if, but if not, you know, if you disagree with me, we don't, you know, you can wait.
I think we can plan it, mid-June timeframe, and then...
Yeah.
We're going to have, the world's going to, the amount it's going to change in the next two months is probably going to be similar to what it's changed in the last month, so we're just going to all have to adjust and accommodate reality as it, as it comes at us.
And, you know, we have talked year in and year out about changing the quorum. I mean, Concord is a much bigger, you know, population, has a much smaller quorum than we have, for instance. Trying to remember when I used to live there, I think it was 50 at the time I was on school board there. So, you know, ridiculous, and we never had a problem. And anyway, and now with, I think also there'll probably be a way of doing, you know, remote, just as we're doing now, I think this has kind of broken through that glass ceiling that, you know, we're never going to go back at this point, and people will be able to attend remotely.
While waiting for Wayne, I would like to go back and talk about the revenue side of things for a minute. Again, you know, this is not my area of expertise, so you're with me. But, so it doesn't sound like that our, that the population of Carlisle was significantly impacted, if the property taxes are, the payment of property taxes are any indication...
Right.
It sounds like the town of Carlisle was significantly impacted during the 2008, 2009 downturn. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's correct, and I also feel, I mean... And I also feel, I mean, a lot of this, you know, a lot of real estates paid through escrow. So, you know, the banks had collected right up until that time. And I also think a lot of people, I know I'd want to get off my plate, you know, it's not really, it can ease something, different towns are all very different. It's not really any type of relief, you know, as far as not paying it, it's just pushing it out a little bit more. There is a concern, I feel pushing it out too far late into the end of June would then be, you're then going to be signing a preliminary bill on July 1, and you've got demands on, you know, the 2020, the demands on the, you know, motor vehicle. I feel confident that, you know, we're going to get those revenues in. It may shift a month or so depending on what is best for Carlisle and the decisions we make, but I do feel confident that for fiscal 20, we will, I think it's going to have more of an impact on the preliminary bill if it would have an impact on, you know, taxpayers. I think a lot are already kind of set with their, you know, April 1st was when the bills went out. And I'm already starting to see, you know, the revenues start to come in, and the banks will pay by whatever due date, you know, we decide on. So that's just.
People, people do not, people pay their property tax because they want to keep their house.
House. That's your most important asset.
I'm more thinking about it sort of from the other end, which is not so much thinking about 2020, but 2021. If we, if it's really the significant, you know, some people are talking about a depression, an economic depression, then, you know, folks in Carlisle are going to be affected by that at some point. And I'm just, just raising this to say, I guess, to ask what, when the FinCom is looking at 2021, how are you going to make those projections? I don't know whether there are any key economic indicators you can look at or whether, is there a way to get unemployment data by town who's filed for unemployment?
You can, but you know, I think ultimately, but it's a lagging data. And I think, I think you're right, Barney, that that's the whole reason why we need to go into 2021 with rules, with maneuvering room. And, you know, so that we just don't know what's going to happen.
And you might see when you go to set your tax rate, depending on how it is there, and we have the, you know, reserves built up, that you may then want to take free cash or, you know, your stabilization fund and take some portion of that to reduce your, you know, your tax rate to help the, you know, taxpayers. I think we're going to just see, you know, each month how it's going to, you know, affect us. And like Jim said, it might be a lag time on a lot of these things. I think there's a bigger impact more on the 2021 than the 2020. And that's why I'm a little concerned pushing too far out to have then, you know, is that a real relief if we, you know, turn around and, you know, you're paying your tax bill and then getting billed, you know, a month or so later for the next prelim? And, you know, I think, I think a lot of, I think, I think a lot is going to, you know, it's an option. I think a lot's going to stay with the date now, and I think we're going to get the payments in for 2020 on a regular basis if we keep it that way.
What also reinforces that is that the federal tax due date is now July, not April.
Right.
You know, if it's a cash flow issue, people shouldn't be able to pay their property.
Yes, that's exactly. And if you don't do it, they'll push it out and pay for something else, and is that good? We wanted to pay the, you know, it's your asset. It's just that you people all know what's best for Carlisle and their taxpayers. It's just, I think for this, you know, it almost might not be a bad idea to keep with, you know, our dates, and some, some towns are keeping.
And Barney, I think we're going to, we'll have to keep a close eye on our neighboring towns and see how different towns are responding to this. One thing in our favor is that even though there'll likely be a negative impact, Carlisle is going to be better positioned to deal with that impact than a lot of the neighboring towns, just given our characteristics. So I think we'll all be paying attention to what Concord and Bedford and Westford are doing and how they're approaching it. And I think that'll inform what we do as well.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just end with this comment, because I actually see Wayne, I'm also sensitive to your timing in terms of your agenda, is, you know, one thing that you know about any projection or forecast, it's wrong. And I think that's why, I've been doing this long enough for the corporate world, and that's the mantra, it's wrong. And the whole thing around this is around the planning and the ability for us to, you know, look and provide some ballast to be able to adjust it. Because I'll tell you, last recession is going to be different than this one. Our town is much older than it was before. They're dependent on retirement, 401Ks where the stock market may have gone down, right? So the makeup is different. We don't know, right? I guess is the thing. And so, you know, if there isn't any other kind of topics, I think we have a few items here that I think the Board of Selectmen, you know, I think you'd have to get some type of thought and discussion around in terms of ideas and such. One is the aspect of holding positions, and just like the normal kind of process around positions is the need, right? That starts with the Board of Selectmen. So holding positions like head of COA, those types of things, those are going to be discussions that I think we're going to ask you guys to take, as well as the COLA. And that's another position that the Board of Selectmen takes. And just to be clear, our thought wasn't changing the COLA for this year, but it would be for the next budget year. So that would be something that we'd be looking to you for some guide and thoughts on as well. And I don't know if there's anything else that the committee has that we want to put up there for the Board of Selectmen in terms of their conversations ongoing. We'll go ahead and start talking about other types of spend, getting a communication out to departments. And then in the coming weeks, we'll probably maybe set up some additional time, not a month later, but, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks we'll come back and do an update and status, and we can trade notes at that point.
I just want to clarify one thing about the last tax bill that went out. Went out April 1st.
Correct.
But there was nothing in the, I already paid mine, so I don't have anything in it. But, you know, there wasn't anything that said, oh, if you pay this late, we're going to, you know, extend the date, we're not going to forgive the penalties and stuff. So I'm wondering if we should just not leave that alone, because it makes no sense to me at this point. We should have made that decision before, you know, if we were going to forgive things, because we, it seems to me we already knew that before it went out, and it was those.
I don't think the bulletin was quite out then. But if it, if we do vote anything, originally they were going to have you notify, do a mailing, which would have cost everybody everything, plus you're putting something in the mail. They were going to make you do a bulletin to every single taxpayer and do a whole nother billing. That obviously didn't work, so it quickly came down. And now whatever decisions made on whatever option, again, they're options, it's not mandatory like that. You, some towns will keep it exactly the way it is. But if you exercise any one of the three options, then you need to post it on your website and put it out so everybody then is aware of it. But you're right, no, nothing is in, we've gotten a few asks on it. I've gotten a lot of people just asking, can I go online to pay my bill? And they're paying it, I'm a new owner, or whatever. So it would just be kicking that revenue out another month or so.
But shouldn't we just leave it alone right now, Kate? Just leave it alone?
I would rather.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
But we need to make that, I think that has to be a decision to leave it alone, so that we also let people know that, no, we're not going to exercise any of those options.
And you don't even have to know anything, because the banks know, I mean, are asking me for confirmation, but it's up on the website, it has the due date of May 1st, the banks know it, our taxpayers know it. Right now, I've had a conference call last week, right after it happened, when it first came out, I had several emails, and I said, the due date as, you know, as it stands is May 1st. And they're like, okay, thank you, you know. So again, it's an option, it's not a mandatory thing. A lot of towns are going to, you know, those banks are going to pay whatever due date it is, and I'm not really sure kicking the can down the road until later on top of, that'll put our demands out later, then you're going to have everybody. I don't know that it's a relief. Do you know what I mean? But you know the taxpayers best.
So Select Board, do they, do you want to make a decision tonight about that? Or do you want to put that on another agenda?
We don't need to vote to do nothing.
No, we don't. So I guess what I'm looking for is some sort of sense of the board.
Yeah, I say leave things alone.
Okay, there's a one, leave things alone.
I agree.
Okay, you agree, Barney?
Yeah, I agree as well. I would just say, though, Kim or Angela, if you get calls from people who are finding it difficult to pay that final tax bill, you know, we, I think we should be
Sensitive.
Sensitive to that, but also recognize that, so let's say somebody incurs a late payment penalty or interest or whatever, that there are, if it's due to financial difficulty, that we do have some options in town in terms of the, you know, some of the organizations that are trying to help people out.
So I do have a concern about why I can wait.
Believe it as it is, but to be, you know, to keep, be aware and not just push people to getting into a crisis situation.
The person that came forward today was most concerned about their mortgage and their taxes is in their mortgage. And I think it's, I honestly do not know how much help the neighbor fund will be with something like that, because it was a big mortgage. And so, you know, I'm not sure what we can do about that.
Well, maybe, you know, again, I, you know, I don't want to know and not appropriate to know the specifics, but maybe in a case like that, they pay their mortgage, but if then they're having difficulty, you know, paying for the groceries or getting the electric bill paid or something, that's where some other of the groups that are providing that kind of support could help out.
All right. We invited Wayne to come a little early. Sorry, Wayne, we were talking to hurry up and wait.
That's, no, that's, that's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see Tim's text.
Oh, that's, oh, okay.
I can stay on for a while if there are other things you needed to get.
Yeah, no, no, we really wanted you to be here while the FinCom was still here to talk about, you know, when and how to reschedule town meeting, how late it could, you know, you think it should go. We were kind of preliminarily discussing no later than June 30th, even were the legislature going to allow, you know, something later? We're thinking that doesn't really help us financially, and so that we wouldn't, you know, exercise that option. And we were talking about pushing some things. Since we were talking about having a fall town meeting anyway, you know, earlier, that we would then, in addition, push off some of the money items off to them, to the fall town meeting as well, that warrant articles that have a lot of money attached to them to give us more time to know where we stand and manage that risk. So, and the other question, it was from James, I think, was about quorums and, you know, what are, talking about forecasts, but how do we, you know, do we forecast having more difficulty, you know, gathering a quorum? What kind of rules are we going to have about remotes and remote things? And do you still need a quorum, et cetera?
Okay. Let me start with just updating you on what I know for certain, and then move into the realm of speculation and estimation. So what I know for certain is that Concord has reset their, their meeting for, I believe, June 22nd. The legislature has passed the law that I had mentioned the last two sessions with you, that sort of makes the whole extension process a little bit easier. And basically, what that says is if, if the state of emergency is declared by the governor extends past June 30th, then there is a mechanism in place to allow, even if we don't have a town meeting before June 30th, we can continue with 1/12. You know, you're basically continuing with the same budget rolling forward. So there is provision for that. I do think that what most towns are doing that I'm aware of, and so this is an unscientific sample, but it seems that the towns that were not already locked in to a date that they had posted a warrant and took a 30-day extension and so forth, those that have some flexibility, such as we have with Carlisle, tend to be looking at sometime in June, and the latest ones I've seen over the last couple of days tend to be going into the second half of June. And so that, that's sort of what's currently out there. With the new legislation that's passed, I had some back and forth with town council to make sure that, that he and I were reading it the same way and interpreting it the same way, and happily we do. Basically, to re-answer the question you asked last time, Kate, the ball continues to be in the Select Board's court for setting the date of town meeting. You should do that, I think, not necessarily at this meeting, but, you know, either your next one or the next one thereafter. After that, at a properly noticed meeting, you can further delay it, not past June 30th unless the state of emergency goes past that. But let's just say, for example, if you set the meeting as June 15th, and we find happily that in the beginning of May, the governor says, well, things have, you know, social distancing worked, we're the lift restrictions, and so we're happily heading towards June 15th, we think we're able to do it. But then suddenly there's a spike, a recurrence, and a reimposition of the state of emergency at the last minute. Should that happen, then I have the power, even if you don't have time to have a properly noticed meeting, then I would have the power to call a 30-minute delay, I'm sorry, a 30-day postponement, not 30 minutes, 30-day postponement. So there's plenty of flexibility in changing the date after it has already been announced. And I presume similar to the, you know, the election law that said you could reuse ballots if a town election, if you move the date, you don't have to change the date on the ballots that you've already printed up. We'd be able to deal with the logistical things. So I think that handles the scheduling aspects. In terms of quorum, the legislation that has been passed did not do anything to touch the quorum requirement. There is some legislative language that is, that has been floated. I don't think, I'm not aware that anything has formally been proposed, but there is a legislation that the people are thinking of that would allow the Board of Selectmen to reduce the quorum. Some versions say as low as a 10th, others say a quarter or a half or a third, something like that. And there are different ways it might be enacted. As I said, that's just, people are floating proposals. I'm not aware that any legislation has been filed, so we can't count on anything happening on that at this point. The other thing that is happening, as I'm aware of, at least one town that is planning to file a petition with a court, they say by the end of this week, that would allow their Board of Selectmen to reduce their quorum to 10%. They had a 300-person quorum, which is pretty steep, and they want to reduce it to 30. And all they would do would be to just have a limited meeting that would just pass the budget and any necessary financial items, and that would be all that they're able to do. And they're asking for a court order to allow them to do that. It's anyone's guess whether, you know, a judge would allow that, but that at least is something that's, that's going on, and we'll certainly have answers to those sorts of things well before June. and we'll certainly have answers to, to those sorts of things well before June. So that's, that's all I know.
That's, it's clear as mud, but it covers the ground.
Sorry about that.
Um, anybody have comments, other ones, other than the snarky ones like mine? The 22nd, if Concord reset to the 22nd, uh, the week after that's the 29th, does, uh, we have to have a, do we have to also have our, um, I have, now I'm totally confused. Our election within, before June 30th as well, or is just one week after, um, the town meeting enough? Cause I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, if it's referenced in the bylaws. Traditionally, it's been eight days after the town meeting. So I think we had talked about the, uh, if a town meeting were on June 22nd, the election could be June 30th and we keep it on this fiscal year.
Policy guidelines. I have the bylaw here. I could maybe look it up.
Well, and also I believe some of the emergency legislation addressed elections as well. So that would need to be referenced. I, I think, um, you know, as it, as it was, we, we had a little bit of a coordination dance with Concord about the school committee. Now, if, um, if we don't think we're having any of those warrant articles, then I suppose there's less to worry about. But, um, it, it probably would not be the wisest thing for us to schedule our town meeting for the same night as Concord's, um, to the extent that there's regional school committee issues.
And I guess the other question is, could we just do the next Tuesday?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we're, there's, there's nothing set in stone that we have to do it on, on a Monday.
Right.
Or a given number of days after the town meeting.
For, for the, I don't, I don't see anything about elections in general here, but I, uh, I, you know, I'm just, um.
In Egger Town, we had our elections two days after our town meeting.
Yeah, I don't see.
And if we can.
Any reason not to do that?
The parking lot warrant is my understanding is not going to be moved. So that was going to be one of the major talking points in terms of coordination with regional school.
Yeah, so that only leaves then the, the school budget. Um, and normally there's never any talking about the budget anyway.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it, it'll be quite a shame if we can't have a debate over the parking lot while being in the parking lot, which, which is a definite option for where we will hold the town meeting.
That's, that's a different parking lot. The, the other parking lot, this, this water under the bridge, that's happening. Okay.
So we, we resolved, or we need to check on the question about the town election, whether it could fall into July, I mean, into, yeah, into July. Or we want to try to, are we thinking we, whenever we schedule the town meeting, we want to try to leave enough room for the town election to happen before the end of June?
Yeah, the, the only reason, in fact, to have the town election before, after the meeting is so that the same selectmen sit at the top, you know, on the dais as, um, because I think there's some towns that actually have their election before, um, town meeting. Uh, and maybe they install, do they just install their office, you know, their, their selectmen afterwards, after the town meeting then? I mean, and again, you know, I want, I'll have to look at the bylaws and see if there's any reason why we can't just do that. I mean, if that's the big pro, if we can't have the election in July, it's possible we could have it before the town meeting, is what I'm saying.
But currently we're, we're considering Tuesday night. If, if Concord is on the 22nd, we're considering the 23rd.
That's right, and then we still have time before June ends.
June 30th.
To do it.
And on the 30th.
Yeah.
Not, not that it's a big factor, but the last day of school will be June 22nd.
Ah, no, it's, yeah, that, actually, so the 23rd sounds like it'd be a good time to have it.
If the kids go.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they go back to school.
Well, they're still going to school, I guess.
Well, yeah, that's right. Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
But they're, you know, they'll be, you know, we'll see, but that, that is definitely a hard date, the June 22nd.
Okay, so.
So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm actually looking up the, the, um, the election does need to be held by June 30th under the.
It does.
The new bill that was passed.
So it's important for us to do our town meeting before the election. We'd like to have it maybe a week before. So if we have the election on Monday, the 29th, and we do our town meeting on the 23rd, we cover all our bases.
That works.
Right, yep.
Okay, why don't we call that our, have consensus of the board, uh, that that's what we're going to go? Or do we want to just go ahead and set it and be done with it? I, I, I like finishing things up.
I think we, there's no reason, there's no reason not to set it since the moderator has the authority to change it after that anyway.
Okay, good idea. All right, so, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move it, 23rd.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to reschedule the annual town meeting, uh, to June 23rd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, we'll do a roll call, um, Barney?
Arnold, I.
Luke?
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Louis, I, and Reed, I, so it's four I's, June 23rd for Carlisle Town Meeting. Um, and then we will, um, isn't, isn't it the town clerk that sets the date of the, of the, um, well, she takes, does the caucus on the election?
They set the caucus date, I think, you know, the board calls for the town meeting and the town election, usually the same warrant, but.
I think would be better to have a different course. I think, who was it that was suggesting that it'd be better to do it in, in separate warrants? Was that you, Wayne, that did that, or Wayne's muted?
Oh, wait a minute, okay.
No, he's not. Now he is.
Wayne, can you, can you speak? Are you muted?
Somebody, somebody else was on.
Oh. Still can't hear Wayne. Try it again, Wayne. Nope.
Not really.
Not working.
Okay. Scott is muted. That's, I see his lips moving, but, uh, he's muted. Okay.
Want to call back in, Wayne? Or, you know.
Yeah, try that.
Link again?
Yeah, that, that usually works.
Yeah.
So we think it would be Peggy that would then set the, the caucus in the election.
Unfortunately, she was not able to, um, make it tonight because she had something at church. Yep, there he is.
But he's muted.
Okay.
No, he's not now.
Nope, still can't hear him. He hears us, obviously.
Do you know American Sign Language?
Go to that little button next to the mute and, you know, where it says, um, whatever it says about your.
Yeah. Built-in microphone or same system or.
Yeah. Select a speaker. Test speaker and microphone.
He shouldn't be muted.
No, he's not.
And he was fine before.
God.
Maybe he's just messing with us.
He can hear us and he's.
Just moving his lips, right?
I, I hope we weren't bombed because I did hear somebody say, you know, Wayne, are you muted?
That name popped up for a minute, somebody hold.
There you go.
Send a call on his phone.
You know, the quorum thing may be solved if they get, if they get everybody to be tested by then, we may not have an issue. And the way, the way the testing is going with the 15-minute testing is quite possible by June, we'll all be able to do it.
That's antibody testing?
No, that's testing for the, for the virus.
Oh, okay, so it is testing, oh, okay, because I was going to say antibody testing wouldn't help you because it just tells you that you have it, doesn't tell you whether you still have it.
Right.
Okay.
So he's asking for the phone number?
Phone number, yeah.
When he dials any, we need to make sure his speakers get turned down so we don't end up with a squeal.
Somebody put in the phone number in for him? Cause I don't know it. Oh, wait, okay, here it is. Okay, so plus one. Nine, two, nine, two, oh, five, six, oh, nine, nine. Yeah. I already, oh, I did it from Tim, sorry, to Tim. Okay, I typed it in and then. Here we go. This is looking. There's a muted phone at the right, in my right-hand corner. Is that, is that you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay.
This is good, okay, sorry about, okay. So I, I think the question was, if I'm remembering where we were five minutes ago, you were asking, who has the power to set the, um, the election date?
Yes.
Under the, the new bill that was passed, and now I've lost it. I was flipping through so many. It says that the select board or the Board of Registars may vote on any day to postpone the election to a date certain honor before June 30th. So it's, it's your power, um, this is, uh, Senate Bill 2608. I, I don't know, uh, I don't know what the, I'm not sure what the past bill number was, but.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's pretty, I, it's pretty clear that you have the, uh, the power.
All right, and I guess the other question was, is it better to have two warrants? One for the, for the election and one for the town meeting? Does that give us more flexibility and, um?
I, I, I don't, I don't think it really matters, given the way things are, uh, um, the way the legislation has, has evolved. At, at least, at least what, what, what I've seen, um, is that, uh, the, the two warrants or a single warrant doesn't really matter. People are being very practical and I would just do it the way we've always done it.
Okay, so, um, can I have, um, a motion to set the, um, election date for June 29th? Was that the 29th?
But the Monday.
Monday. Is there any problem to doing it on Monday or do you want to do it?
Usually Tuesday, but that's tradition.
I would, I would stick with the date that people are, you know, the day of the week people are used to.
Okay, so then the 20, the 30th then?
Yeah.
I move, let's see, uh, we test the election for June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alan, um, votes?
Louis, I.
Reed, I, okay, that's four I's. So the elections will be on the 30th, the town meeting will be on the 23rd, and we will notify, uh, Tim, will you notify the town clerk so she can, um, set up the caucus?
Oh, yes, I will.
She's the one that, uh, does the caucus date, but hopefully she'll do that, she does it, uh, she knows how to do the calculations.
Yep.
Okay, and she should let us know when that will be. Excellent. Anything else from FinCom and the town moderator? Priscilla, had anything ask, add, no? Thank you for coming.
Just thank you to, to FinCom.
Thank you, everybody, for hard work and the, the thinking ahead and the planning. Appreciate it.
We'll set up a follow-up in a couple of weeks.
Okay, yeah, I really feel like you're having to do your job twice this year, so I apologize.
That's what it is.
Feel free to come back anytime.
Is this a 24-hour channel?
Seems that way sometimes.
But I have a rainbow every day, so that shows that I'm optimistic.
Yes. Stay healthy.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, um, town administrators report.
I really don't have much. I know that Barney has a, a program that she'd like to introduce to the board, uh, tonight for your, uh, approval, hopefully. And I think I circulated this afternoon kind of an outline of that program. I don't want to steal any of your thunder, Barney, if you want to describe that.
The Burma Shave Project.
Exactly, because at a certain age, Burma Shave will be something.
That's me, I used to love those, I gotta tell you.
Yeah, so, um, uh, during one of the, um, LA PC calls, we talked about how to maybe bring a little cheer to the town center. And, um, so there's a great group of people, including Rebecca Bromar, Christine Lear, Allison Saylor, Carrie Patel, and Holly Mansfield, um, and Jane Anderson. And we've got a bunch of ideas, but one specific one that we've already decided we want to do is to, um, have some chuckles on the common. And the idea would be to create something like a series of Burma Shave signs, but obviously these would not be promoting the shaving cream. And we'd, um, they could be a joke or it could be some cute, you know, rhyming series. And that what Holly is talking about doing is getting some of the families with, um, young kids through the Parents Connection to take on making a series of signs. And they do it virtually, so the adults would decide what this, each sign's going to say, come up with something funny or it would make people smile when they drove or walked by. And then, um, each one would take a sign to create and then have their kids decorate it. And then a central person from our little core group would pick up the signs in a safe way and then we would be the ones to actually put them in sequence on the, on the hill of the town common. And we're talking about trying to do that in other, um, areas of, on other, um, roadways where there are pathways coming into the center as well, different sets of signs. And what we might do is, I mean, we'll see how quickly we get the first set created, but we could say have them up for a week and then, you know, replace them with a new set if we had other, uh, families putting together new signs. So, um, because it's, um, we'd like to use the town common, we're asking for permission from the Board of Selectmen and then Christine Lear is going to the FRS to get their permission as well. And they would be, um, a sort of a 30 by 20-inch poster, you know, sturdy poster that will get laminated and it would go onto two stakes and stand maybe three feet, three and a half feet tall and get, you know, stuck in the ground in a sequence that allows enough space between so that drivers could read it, but also people walking by. And then the, and so it'd be easily removed.
My, my only worry, and it's not, you know, I don't want to run afoul of the Historic Commission. And so I think I'm wondering if we need to ask them. I, I know at one point, um, when the library had "Just Dewey It" as their sign, they were, they were asked by the Historic Commission, they were told by the Historic Commission that it wasn't historic in, in nature. So, um, I, I mean, I like the idea. I don't think we should, it should be a problem, but I just would rather let them know in advance.
Sure. And, and so do you think this is a matter of, um, saying, you know, that the Board of Selectmen and the First Religious Society are comfortable with the idea and we, we're just letting them know, or this is asking for their blessing?
I think you, I, I would put it, yeah, I think I would put it that the, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the LEPC, you know, in this time feel that there are certain things that need to be done for the community. But, and they're aware that this is in the Historic District, and unless there is some, uh, unless they have some strenuous objections, this is what's going to happen. I mean, you know, kind of.
I'll figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I think, you know.
But if, if the rest of you are comfortable, um, then.
They won't mess with you, Barney.
I do, I do know a person or two in Historic.
I mean, this might, this was several years ago. It might have been a different iteration of that committee, but I just, you know, I, I know I was, when I had heard about it, I was personally very incensed, because it was one of the signs I thought was one of the best that the library had was "Just Dewey It", you know, I thought it was just, you know.
Yes.
But anyway, there you go. So you have, I think, uh, support from the board. I see everybody shaking their head. Okay. Tim, anything else on your Town Administrators?
I really don't have anything else, Kate, at this point, tonight.
Liaison reports, I think we've all, um, we've seen, heard from the LEPC, that's the major thing to hear from. I don't think there's any. Concom hasn't been doing anything recently. I did hear, uh, actually, you know, uh, my neighbor is the Chair of the Planning Board, and I did hear that the school, the special permit for the school canopy has to be amended because they were going to put the, the major pad in the, in the woods that are, with that wooded area that's between the, the street and the parking lot, and now it's being moved, that pad is being moved up to an island. And so they have to have an amendment, and, uh, and they're trying to figure out how to do that. So. That's about the only other thing I know of that's happening in town.
And what do we, what do we anticipate? Are we anticipating that this coming Tuesday, we're having the usual Q and A forum first, but then we're also having the Board of Selectmen regular meeting?
Yes. Well, this is kind of a regular meeting as well, um, because originally we said we're going to meet Tuesdays and Thursdays, then at a certain point we said, well, there's nobody coming, let's do some business. I think this Tuesday is a regular meeting time. After, after that, you know, we could say, we don't want to put any more agenda items on our Q and A. Maybe we don't need to have Q and A anymore for a while. Maybe we could do it on, you know, just once a week instead of twice a week. We should talk about that as well. But I, why are you bringing it up?
Well, I was just thinking that we had talked about, at, at, I think this last Tuesday, we talked about trying not, that this Thursday was because of the nature of the conversation in the FinCom, you know, we're gonna go ahead, but then we were gonna try to just do the busy, whatever, regular Board of Selectmen business, try to keep that on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
I was just, just gonna affirm that if, that makes sense to me. And then my follow-up was, and so what do we see coming up that is likely to be on this Tuesday's agenda? Because I know the, the pieces we couldn't do this past Tuesday, Tim, they're not going to be ready this coming Tuesday, right? We're thinking it's two weeks before they're ready, those, um, the.
Labor Council?
Family Leave Act and the, um.
Tower.
Oh, I thought that was happening Tuesday.
The Labor Council is available Tuesday. The recommendation on Bana Davis would be on the 28th, I believe, is what we decided Tuesday.
Yeah.
The Labor Council is available, uh, at 6:30 PM Tuesday night.
And I really do not want to foreclose 6:30 for the, uh, for Tuesday, for the
Executive Session.
Executive Session.
Whoa, 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 that's right. That's right. Okay, got it.
And I really don't want to foreclose, um, you know, having business on a Thursday if we had a, for instance, you know, because at the beginning of this, at any rate, things were moving so fast, we really had to be ready to make decisions more than once every, you know, once a week. So I mean, there were times, there were things needed to be decided, you know? Now, maybe things won't unroll again like that. Again, maybe that was just because it was the beginning, but I would not like to foreclose the possibility of the, the Selectmen posting meetings at times other than second and fourth Tuesdays beyond even just the informational meetings, in, in case we need to make decisions.
Yeah, I would think, but given that we, it, we certainly didn't have a lot of, um, non, you know, sort of LEPC members on the Tuesday call, but we certainly had more. We had some, and tonight, I don't believe we had any. That were not, you know, there because they were board members or, you know, mosquito or, you know, whatever town staff. So, you know, maybe we should just stick with Tuesday night being a Q and A forum, and then followed by a regular Board of Selectmen meeting, at least through the end of the month, and then we can see what, um, I mean, it sounds to me like we're going to be going through May as well under this situation. But anyway, I'm comfortable with going every Tuesday for the next while.
Okay, so drop Thursday? Just do Tuesday? What do you think?
If there's any, do you think that'll, any concern for townspeople that have?
I don't know.
Both, you mean both of the Q and A and the board meeting, or just the board meeting?
No, 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 just, so dropping the Thursday Q and A and having any kind of Board of Selectmen.
And no, so nothing, nothing on Thursday?
Nothing on Thursday and just going with Tuesdays.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And because one of the things too is if we do open it up to discussion, you know, I mean, you know, in, in terms of some of the agenda items that we're gonna discuss, you know, I mean, we got to think about that too. So I, I, I think having the one day makes sense. If, you know, if we need to pop something on a Thursday, we could do it.
Yep.
But.
Yeah.
I think having the one consistent day.
Okay, so, we're going to, this is our, today, what is today?
Tonight.
Tonight. I don't even know what day it is.
It's really awful, isn't it? Thank God for reminders on calendars.
Okay, tonight's Thursday. So this is our last Thursday meeting. Okay, we will have, continue to have weekly Tuesday meetings. Which will open with, and I would think we could open with a 10 minute Q and A session at this point. We are going to continue to encourage people to drop their questions to the, you know, to the, um, townhouse or to one of us, um, for answering if they need answering, and to certainly tune in for the first few minutes for the LEPC update, okay? Uh, and so that kind of makes it a little easier anyway. So then our agenda, and we will have some, you know, agenda items on there, because I think we're gonna start. Yes.
Yeah, I just, we had told the Council on Aging, we were going to potentially schedule for next Tuesday the possible appointment of a new director. Does the board want to talk about that tonight, or talk about that Tuesday and defer it to another night, or? It seems like it's, it's pretty far down the road as far as.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Whether to fill or not fill.
And it's also, and if there's one position that needs to be filled, it's that one. And their workload is, during this crisis, is greater, not lesser. And so I, I think we ought to go ahead with that.
Okay.
And I, I, this Tuesday, I, I don't see any reason not to do it this Tuesday. I thought we said this Tuesday. Yeah.
What, where's the, Finance Committee had brought that up tonight. I just wanted to make sure the board was.
Yep, and I, and I kind of got there. They seem to be leaning toward that maybe a position that we don't want to defer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I was at their meeting on Monday, and, um, I, I believe I defended that position, and they were on board. I believe they were on board with filling that position, although not real.
Would the person that's applying be, that there, that there, is there candidate then? Would they be coming Tuesday night, or we'd just be looking at the resume and somebody from the COA would present it?
That's, Tim?
I think that the Search Committee, uh, was going to make a recommendation based upon a couple of rounds of interviews. I don't think the candidate was going to be present. I think she, you know, easily could be if, if the board wanted to meet her.
Have we done it in the past?
In this way, yeah.
How have we done it in the past? Who wants to know?
Normally, the candidate is present when they're appointed by the.
Yeah.
The board likes to meet the person they're appointing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because we work with them a lot.
I'm sure that we can arrange that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could call in, you know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, is the, or how soon would they be starting, assuming we give our seal of approval?
She's currently the, with the, the.
Assistant Director in Lincoln, the Lincoln Council on Aging.
So she's have to give notice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's back up a minute. Uh, the, the meeting on the request on Tuesday, they're coming, uh, to, I mean, if we can agree tonight that we've all read the resume and we have no problems with it, then there's no problem with interviewing her on Tuesday. However, if there is some feeling that this may not be the person they want to make the offer to, then she shouldn't be invited. You don't want to invite her and then not appoint her.
Right.
Well, they are cer, they certainly think she's the one that they would like.
I'm talking about us, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have not looked at the resume. I apologize. Did, did we get it?
Yes.
Okay. That's my bad then. I haven't looked at it, but I am willing, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with the COAs, their hiring committee, and then Alan D., have you met the candidate? Or have you looked at, have you been involved in any of this process?
I haven't been involved in the process, but I've been at the COA meetings where it's been heavily discussed, including people who say maybe this isn't the best person. At least one person said that, but he was roundly shouted down by the, she was, she's been interviewed, I think, by 13 people, and they are unanimous in their recommendation.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, I have no problem with inviting her. It would shorten the timeframe. Uh, we, we only have one candidate.
The selection committee only had one candidate?
They're, they're making one recommendation.
They're only making one recommendation.
Correct.
And?
They had, they had three finalists. One withdrew. The other, they didn't feel was anywhere nearly as well qualified as this one, and so they were just recommending this one.
Okay, and so it was the board, somebody, so it was not the committee, um, that, that, one person on the committee, the.
No, it was a member, it was a member of the board.
A member of the board.
Yeah, not, not, not anybody who had ever interviewed her. It was, it was, it was based, his, his concerns were based on the fact that she has changed jobs a few times.
Oh, that's, it's a legitimate concern. We've had enough turnover here. Thank you very much.
But, but actually, the, except for one case, she'd been, she'd always worked at, at least five years at a position, and the one that she's was left after about a year was because it was not a good match.
And, um, are, is the, is the, has the salary been determined?
No.
And so I guess one question would just be to make sure that, uh, whatever salary we're thinking we're offering is the salary that she would accept, because if it's a, right, because I, at least my, my feeling would be, we don't want to, we don't want to make the salary higher than what we had planned, given what we're trying to do in terms of holding the budget.
Well, as I understand, what we would do Tuesday is authorize an offer to be made, not to do the hiring.
Right.
Yep.
The other, the, the other thing that we have to keep in mind though is the stance of the FinCom that it would not, should not be, should not increase their budget. So it'd have to be either at or below the current director's salary, and
Right.
You'd have to be willing to accept the, um, benefits as they are.
Yeah. So you don't know whether the, the person that is being considered has any idea what the salary might be and has said that's okay with me, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Tim, do you have any other insight?
I, I think that the Council on Aging was making that known to candidates who, who asked. I don't think it was in the advertisement, but it's a grade nine position, so the salary range is prescribed. And someone starting, uh, you know, someone who had not been a COA director elsewhere would be starting at step one. So there is sort of a salary that can be offered.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's what I mostly wanted.
Right. And I think most of the candidates knew that, because that was something that the COA wanted to tell people that were applying.
Yep.
Okay.
So are we gonna, so we'll invite her on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
What are we gonna do?
Kate, do you want to discuss the, uh, message for the website?
Ah, yes, um, we have been requested by the LEPC, although I'm still quite, I, it's the second time we've done a message. Uh, this one's not much different than the message we have up already, but anyway, we're trying to have a message from the Selectmen on the website to the residents, uh, to let them know what we're doing about the COVID. It's a COVID message. So that was circulated earlier. I don't know if you guys were able to read it. Um, Alan drafted it.
I thought it was an excellent statement, um, and I think it's worth doing. I mean, I, I definitely think it's worth putting it there. And I, my only suggestion would be to, um, date it, you know, so it's, so, so if somebody looks in another week, they know that whatever the references are in there are a week old.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's a couple of changes have to be made. I, there was a spelling error, and I'll also have to take Thursday meetings off.
Ah, that's right. We were, well, yes.
I've already, I've already done it on my copy.
Okay, great. Good, good. So that's, that's, we have consensus that that can go up? All right.
And, and I should, I should send that to Jen? Tim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
She can.
And she'll upload it for us. God knows where it'll go after that.
Well, I think it should be a fourth bullet.
A fourth bullet?
There's, there's three sub-bullets under the COVID thing. This will be a fourth.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I keep on going on our thing, and I still can't figure out how to navigate on it, and I feel like I always have to click everything twice or three times to get to a different page, and, you know, it says click on here for COVID information. You, you click on it, and then it says click on here for COVID information. It's like, I just clicked, you know, you know.
I, I think, I think we should get it fixed, because the day after we get it fixed, the emergency will be over.
There you go. Why didn't I think of that? Okay, Luke, any, any things you want to bring up? Any?
No, I don't have anything else, Kate, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you're happy the way we are. I think I'm gonna go to Rockport over the weekend. Don't call me.
It's gonna be nice this weekend.
Yeah, and it's gonna rain again Monday, so. Yeah, and it's going to rain again Monday, so.
So.
Anything else on our agenda?
I think that, so Tuesday, we've got the COA, and we've got the, the executives, please don't forget, 6:30 executive session for the Tech Council, Labor Council, COA, and anything else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send the agenda out. Well, I think we, we actually had on there set the town meeting day and the election day, which.
And we did that.
And, and I, from the discussion tonight, the board won't be taking any action on changing the due date of the tax bills, or.
That's right.
Waving, okay? That was, that was another item that we're not going to get to.
Okay, well, I mean, I think we took care of a lot of this, and this, this is the kind of thing that I'm saying that comes up, and it's not necessarily a Tuesday thing, and it has to be.
Yeah.
But it is when we meet. You know, I wouldn't suggest we, we maybe just have an initial conversation about the FinCom's particular points that they wanted our input on, you know, the 2% COLA, the.
Right.
Freezing, you know, vacant positions, and the possibly asking departments to resubmit budgets. I mean, I think we should start discussing that, and if they're thinking they're going to come back in two weeks, then really we ought to be giving them some input, you know, sometime either next Tuesday or the Tuesday after.
Does anybody have an initial feeling?
I, I think it may be premature. I would hate to signal things to the community as large that we're going to do away with the COLA or something like that, without some idea where the FinCom, where they think they may be able to go with things like the 5% reduction and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I, personally, I don't like to balance the budget on the backs of the employees.
Yeah. Me, I'm agreeing.
That's the one place I don't, you know, I'd rather, yeah, that's one place I would not like to go. 5% reduction is another different.
But I think, I think you can put it on the agenda just so we can do it, is just put down budget discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I think part of it is we, we need to figure out exactly what information we need, right? So we'll have to start requesting some of that stuff. And, you know, the sooner we can have that initial ask, you know, I honestly, and I didn't bring this up because I didn't want to get into discussion, but, you know, I, I think, you know, Victor's one month, I think that's a little long. You know, I, I think you've got to just say, like, you know, people are home, you know, so people have time, you know, to figure it out in a couple of weeks where you might be able to cut your budget. Yeah, I think.
But also, but a bunch of boards and commissions have to get their, have, have meetings.
No, I understand that, but I, I mean, a lot of it, you know, like CONSCOM or Board of Health, I mean, that, that's going to be initially, you know, Linda or Sylvia or whoever, it's going to be the administrator, right? And then, and then, you know, and then the committee would be, well, you know, like when I was on CONSCOM, I mean, we didn't know what the hell.
Well, we know, you just, like, this is unilaterally.
Yeah, exactly. No, but it's just, I, I think you give them two weeks, and then if we need to extend it to four, you do, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, what if you're at four, and, oh, well, we haven't really done that yet, you know, then you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're pushing a little late, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point, Luke. I, it felt to me like it was a little too, you know, waiting till, too, too long, for really thinking we're going to have.
That was also partly why I wanted to set the date, so that they, it wasn't going to get even longer, you know, but this way they know when they need to fish or cut paint, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and you could even just give them the, the threat, you know, look at, if you don't do this exercise, we're just going to cut it 5%, you know, because you are going to get certain individuals that will stall, you know, and they just say, you know, and then the people that have actually done it, right? And obviously, you know, some departments may come back and say, no, we really can't cut anything, we're that tight. I mean, you know, I can see, you know, both the chiefs coming back and saying, look at, because of all of this, you know, we just don't have the resources to cut. And I mean, that's certainly understandable, you know, but other departments that aren't, you know, fully engaged, you know.
Well, what, what I heard the FinCom say, though, was, for instance, if you have a, something in long-term caps, like a new squad car.
Yeah.
That would count as your part of your 5%.
Right.
It's not just the, you know, so what they're asking is, can you put that car off for a year?
Right, no, and I, yeah, and that's the thing, that, that's where I think kind of those big sweeps can be made, you know, that, that's why I, you know, I brought that up, you know, just because, yeah, you've got big ticket items, if you can just kick it down the road a bit, you know, and if something happens, it happens, right?
Right.
You know, if a chiller blows up, it blows up, you know, I mean, and, and yeah, sorry, we missed that, but, but yeah, I think that's, that's certainly better than, as you say, putting it on the backs of the employees, you know.
Also, we ought to be able to buy, I don't think we have to do it tonight, but Tuesday, maybe give the Chief of Police some idea on this person he's trying to hire.
Yeah.
Yeah. Although I.
That's a full-time position.
It's a full-time position. It was, yeah. And that was a retirement, that's.
It's a replacement.
It's a replacement, it's not like it's a new position.
Right.
Right, right. Right, and, you know, and I think his point is a valid one, where, you know, you start backfilling that with overtime, you know, because those are hours that you need, right? So.
Right.
You know, it, it, I, I think it makes perfect sense, and I, you know, I, I think he's got a good candidate, so, yeah. Yeah, one thing that I, you know, and I don't know if this is possible for municipalities, but, you know, what some companies are doing is they're dropping, and I know this is going to initially sound like we're putting it on the backs of the employees, but, but like, I know my company looked at it, with certain employees, they would drop them down to four days a week, and then there was a way, there was a government, it was either a government or a bank subsidy to pay that 20%, you know, so the, I mean, it may be just be something for businesses, right, because, because I, I think it was through.
Through the CARES Act?
Yeah, yeah, they, well, actually, they can apply for unemployment for that percentage that's there, they've been laid off for.
Right, so I, you know, I don't know if municipalities are different, you know, just because we're not a small business. But it might be something to, to look into if there's a way where we could supplement the budget somehow, you know, but not, I mean, obviously, if we cut them down to four days and, and it was 80%, then, you know, that's a different question to ask, but if there's a way to subsidize it some, you know, I just, I don't know how that impacts things like insurance and all of that. You know, I think it's a little more difficult, it seems like, in a municipal setting to.
We are a nonprofit.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's just, because even if it's a short-term thing for 12 weeks or eight weeks, you know, and then, and then we bring them back on, you know, if there's some way we could.
A furlough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something you could check out?
Sure, sure, I can, I can track that down.
Okay, would be great.
I mean, there's also some economy to be had, but just having the Town Hall closed, we're not heating, not, you know, at the same rate, not air conditioning at the same rate, so we might want to consider, you know, having town services only being four days a week.
Also, my, my own feeling on that is, you know, a company where, you know, they don't have the revenues to support their employees, that's one thing, that's, that doesn't hold for us. And I would, I would not, I don't, I don't think I would be very in favor of reducing people when our, when our income remains constant.
No, I, I, I agree, it's just if there was some way to supplement the income, right, through a subsidy from the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm, I'm not saying.
Okay.
No, because I agree with you 100% on that, you know, because if we were to reduce the budget, and this was, I was waiting to see if FinCom was going to go there, you know, if we reduce the budget, we should reduce the tax rate accordingly, right? We shouldn't bring in, we shouldn't become a for-profit town.
Yeah, no, I think what they are trying to do is to have enough money so that if the bottom drops out, we don't have to raise taxes.
Right.
So that we don't, in fact, have to raise taxes.
Yeah.
So that we have enough slush to continue to give services, you know, provide services without raising taxes.
And I think they're right, it's probably not the property tax that's going to be hit, it's the state aid.
Yeah.
And that's probably, that probably will get hit.
And that's about a million four.
Yep.
Which is what they're talking about trying to save.
Yeah.
Ready for a journ?
Yes, I'm ready.
I move a journ.
I have to say, I love media this way, because we actually get to see each other literally face to face when we're sitting in a row. See people, you know. This feels way more intimate since we're respects.
Actually, I've been looking at that rainbow behind you the whole night, so.
That is New Zealand.
Oh, is it?
Yes, oops, sorry, they have, that's, I forget where I was exactly, but that's a real rainbow.
Oh my gosh, wow.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not photoshopped or anything.
Wow.
Nice.
Is there a pot of gold at the end of that thing?
Absolutely.
Stretching that mountain.
Yeah, they were putting, this, this was an island, and I think they had, it's in the middle of this lake that we were on, and they had, they were quarantining Kiwis, I think. So they, yeah, so that they wouldn't, there was, there's no predators on that island, so they were, yeah, anyway. There you have it.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.